Before we now come to order, please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Beatty, would you please leave us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Pastor Kevin Orr from Glenwood United Methodist Church here to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council.
Thank you. Looking for the opportunity, let us pray together. Sovereign God, Lord of all creation, we praise you for all the ways you provide for the sustaining of life. We are humbled that you call on each of us to be stewards of what you provide. We now ask that you extend your grace on these who have been entrusted by the citizens of Columbus with the stewardship of the resources of this city, that they faithfully perform the duties granted to them, striving to steward these resources so that all who live and work here have what they need to thrive now and into the future. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, Deau Cower, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden, any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to spend with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, Deau Cower, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Are there any additional additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletins. Are there any other communications to be read to the record?
No, at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go around the dais for any updates or resolutions from my colleagues, starting with Councilmember Bankston. Thank you, council member. Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. First, Happy Bike Month. May is Bike Month. It's a national celebration of biking as transportation, recreation, and essential to our well-being and everyday lives. So, we encourage folks to get out and bike all throughout the month, but to join us also this coming Wednesday. It's the city's Bike to Work Day. So, if you are downtown, please join us from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the corner of Front and Gay Street, right across from City Hall for bagels and coffee. And even if you're not downtown, we hope you get out and get on a bike today. Use one of the great bike lanes for folks who may not feel quite as safe or want to try biking, whether that's to work or for recreation. We encourage you to get out this month. I'm excited to get out on my new e-bike that I got for Mother's Day. So, Happy Late Mother's Day to all the moms out there who celebrated, and I hope to see you out on a bike sometime soon.
That was a really good Mother's Day gift.
This is, that was for a real good mother.
Happy Mother's Day. Councilmember Beatty.
Nothing today.
Councilmember Deau Cower.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I am excited to announce that my office, in collaboration with the Department of Neighborhoods and the We Are Linden organization, will be hosting the return of the Linden Memorial Day service on Monday, May 26th, at 1:00 at Linden Park. Following the refurbishment, relocation, and rededication of the Linden War Memorial last fall, Linden community members expressed a strong desire to bring back a Memorial Day service for the Linden community. After hearing all these requests, I began partnering with city personnel and community stakeholders to plan a new event to honor those service members who have made the ultimate sacrifice. This Memorial Day service is free and open to the public, so please consider joining us on Memorial Day, 1:00 p.m. at Linden Park, which is surrounding the Linden Community Center. Thank you. That's all for me, Council President.
Thank you, council member. Press Pro Tim.
Thank you, Council President. I do have one announcement. Just want to thank all the members of the public who provided their comments to the zoning team during the 60-day public comment period for the proposal to add 161 corridor in Northland to the first phase of Zone In, which we passed last summer. That public comment period ended this past Saturday, May 10th. Now, the zoning team will go back and review all the public comments, review those against the proposal as we move towards presenting that final legislation for council. We will have a public hearing on this topic to review that feedback and potential changes to that legislation on May 28th at 5:30 here in council chambers. So, if folks want to learn more about that initial update to that first phase of Zone In, please come to that council hearing. And again, we'll be reviewing that feedback and any potential changes to the legislation as we move forward to a likely vote on that legislation in early June. Thank you.
Thank you, Press Pro Tim. Councilmember Green.
Just one quick announcement. I wanted to take a minute to share that this week is Trauma-Informed Awareness Week. It's an annual week of recognition to raise awareness about the impact of trauma and to promote trauma-informed care. Our friends at the Columbus Care Coalition at Columbus Public Health are hosting events throughout the city all week. I believe there's a graphic up on the screen there where the events, they're free and open to the public. If anyone is interested in participating, we would love to welcome you to join us. And that's all from me.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Remy. Councilmember White.
Thank you, Council President. I have two quick announcements today. First, next Wednesday, May 21st, I'll be hosting the next Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee hearing at the Franklin Park Conservatory's Wells Barn. Doors will open at 3:30, and the hearing will commence at 4:00 p.m. This will be the second hearing on draft code language regarding pollinator gardens and utility reselling. If you'd like to see written testimonies received during the first hearing, you can visit my page on the council website. If you're interested in providing testimony or have questions, please email my aide Chelsea at C-L-G-O-L-T-E-R-M-A-N at Columbus.gov by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, May 19. I would also like to share the next Wednesdays with White will be on Wednesday, June 4th, at Smokey Row Brethren Church from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. RSVPs are encouraged, but all are welcome to attend. For regular updates on committee activity and other events hosted by my office, I would encourage you to follow me on Eventbrite. Thanks.
Thank you, council member. Are there any comments by our elected officials, city attorney's office, treasurer, auditor? Hearing none. I have one announcement. Folks at home may not know that our longtime clerk, Angie Blevins, time as our clerk is coming to an end at the end of this month, Clerk Blevins has served the city for decades and has truly become an institution here at City Hall itself. Every single piece of legislation that we pass, all the behind-the-scenes work that keeps this place running smoothly flows through her office. Angie, thank you for your incredible service, your steady leadership, and tireless dedication. We will miss you. I am already holding back thoughts and comments. We are going to have a long and well-earned send-off that will embarrass Ms. Angie so much in a couple of weeks, so we will talk more about that. But I am going to move today to appoint Deputy Clerk Toya Johnson to step into Angie's very big shoes. Toya has been with the clerk's office for three years and with the city even longer. She brings a wealth of experience, a sharp eye for detail, and deep commitment to public service. There really is no city council meeting without the hard work of the city clerk's office, so I also want to just thank the entire clerk's team for all that they do to keep us moving. So, tonight, I want to thank both of these amazing women and the entire clerk's team for everything they do. We'll organize, like I said, a big send-off for Angie later this month, and so I'll ask my colleagues to save their tributes, their real tributes, to later this month. But do any of my colleagues have any additional comments at this moment? And you can say something if you want to. Go ahead. There we go. We'll have one.
I'll keep it short. I particularly owe you a great debt of gratitude because I stole your staff member, Jacob. You trained him up, and I have been benefiting. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, council member. All right then, due to the upcoming retirement of city clerk Andrea Blevins, effective May 30th, 2025, I move that Toya Johnson be appointed as city clerk, effective June 1st, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, Deau Cower, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Thank you, and congratulations both to Toya and to Ms. Angie. At this time, I'm so sorry. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30 legislation? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, Deau Cower, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Thank you. Well, the clerk now reading to the records the ordinance number of 30 legislation on tonight's agenda.
Finance and Governance Committee ordinance is 1084, 1145, 1200-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance 1196-2025. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 103X-2025, ordinances 1115, 1125-2025. Workforce, Education, Labor Committee, ordinances 1051, 1073, 1138-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinance 1133-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 874, 1000, 1020, 1058, 1088, 1134-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinance 1067-2025. Rules and Policy Committee, ordinance 946-2025. Zoning Committee, ordinances 1174, 1237, 1175, 1234, 1184, and 1238-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no speakers on the consent portion of the agenda. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those to the record?
Resolutions of Expression 114X, 117X, 111, 113, 105, 112, 116, 106, and 107 X-2025. Finance and Governance Committee, ordinances 935, 1050, 1055, 1056, 1090, 1094, 1096, 1099, 1105, 1130-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinance is 1091, 1121, 1132-2025. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 871, 1110, 1147-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinance is 654, 920, 927, 1014, 1080, and 1205-2025. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee, ordinance is 1079, 1111, 1187-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinance 949-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinance is 1078, 1129, 1137, 1154-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinance is 831, 877, 947, 1006, 1007, 1021, 1070-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances 1012, 1089, 1155, 1186, 1189, and 1210-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion of approval of these items designated as consents? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, Deau Cower, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Consent items are passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed and emergency legislation. First committee to come before council is the Finance and Governance Committee chaired by Councilmember Bankston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Just one ordinance tonight in the Finance and Governance Committee. First, we have ordinance 0795-2025 to authorize the city auditor to modify and extend the agreement with FAST LP for one year to maintain and support the next, I'm sorry, the gen tax revenue management system for the Division of Income Tax, including additional messaging and identity verification services, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,762,753 from the general fund. This piece of legislation is a continuance of just general maintenance of our gen tax revenue system, which is a system that, again, helps us to, the Division of Tax, be able to collect revenues. This is a huge part of the continuization of us modernizing both our auditor's offices as well as our treasurer's offices. So, I know I talked to the auditor before, she didn't want to add anything to it, but I just want to commend her and her team for truly modernizing our systems. This has really benefited in us having a better collection as well as better able to respond to the public. But more, I'm a data geek, so when I have my meetings with her, I get to see data in real time, and it's quite fascinating. So, again, I want to thank her and her team for modernizing our tax system, the auditor's offices, as well as our treasurers, as well as taking that lead in modernizing our systems there. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, Deau Cower, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Thank you, President Harden. So, we have no committees this evening.
Is the Public Service and Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have four. Ordinances today in Public Service and Transportation. First, we have ordinance 0942-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional services contract with Data Ticket Incorporated relative to the Citation Processing Management System and Permit Management System to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,500,000 from the Mobility Enterprise Operating Fund to pay for this contract, to act in accordance with the provisions of the sole source procurement of Columbus City Code Chapter 329 for the Citation Management or Processing Management System and Permit Management System, and to declare an emergency. Data Ticket Incorporated manages the equipment, expertise, and software needed to manage the Citation Processing and Permit Management System for its parking enforcement operations. This legislation seeks to authorize the execution of a one-year contract between the parties terminating no earlier than March 31st, 2026, with annual contract modifications anticipated through 2028. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, Deau Cower, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1010-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Service to prepare and submit a pedestrian and bicycle special solicitation application to the Ohio Department of Transportation to authorize the Director of Public Service to execute grant agreements relative to application award to accept and expend grant funds and to issue refunds if necessary after final accounting is performed. You may have heard me talking about tactical urbanism or quick-fix mobility projects. These are the installation of semi-permanent infrastructure for the purpose of testing roadway improvements or a midterm strategy while we wait for longer, more permanent solutions on our roadways. We know that roadway projects often take a long time to implement. We're applying for funds to enable the city to purchase a quick-fix toolkit to address roadway safety in a shorter timeframe. So, I want to turn it over to Director Scottco for just a second to tell us a little bit more about the grant and the types of projects the city hopes to implement should we receive the funds to get the toolkit. So, Director, floor is yours.
Good evening, President Harden, Chair Barrosa de Padilla, members of council. We intend to develop a quick-build toolkit that will allow public service to speed up our process for planning and implementing the short-term infrastructure safety projects that you were just talking about, council member, by using temporary materials. Installation of four quick-build pilot projects accomplished each year through this grant would likely happen. And the toolkit will include traffic control products such as water barriers, cones, temporary curbs that separate people from walking and biking from traffic for greater safety, and pavement markings and paint, or other tools that we could use along with the signage and bike and pedestrian counters to evaluate the usage. So, this is how we would use this grant.
So, for folks, if you've seen where we've put up temporary stop signs in particular areas, or again, you talked about the water barriers, like we had those along Broad Street when we were testing out Broad Street before we put in the one-year project or pilot project that we have on Broad Street, this gives us the ability to buy our own infrastructure so that we can put them in places, so that we can test things out throughout the year. Our Bike Plus Plan calls for that, Vision Zero. We have even from some of our 311 requests from residents, this gives us now the ability to both have a cost savings from a city perspective, but then for us to also test out certain strategies to make things safer for anyone who's using the roadway, but especially our most vulnerable users, which are pedestrians and cyclists, correct?
Correct. These absolutely will, you know, allow us to do things quickly, but it'll allow us to test areas like on East Broad Street where we weren't quite sure that we had enough room to make people on bicycles or walking feel comfortable. And, you know, once we got it out there and realized that, yeah, we really needed to put the protected bike lanes on both sides of the roads because we really didn't have enough space, this toolkit will help us do this kind of, you know, testing.
So, I know we usually don't take this time when we're talking about applying for the grant, but first of all, we want to manifest the things that we want. So, we wanted to put this out there. But we also wanted to have a conversation with the community about the things that we are trying and how we are trying to also ensure that we have the tools that we need so that we can more immediately respond to roadway safety for our residents to make it safer for everyone. And this is just one of the strategies to do that. So, I wanted to highlight this in the work of the department and our relationship with ODOT that will help us, you know, hopefully advance in this grant and get the tools that we need so that we can still these projects quickly. So, hopefully, we'll come back in a little while with some good news, fingers crossed. So, do my colleagues have any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, Deau Cower, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1047-2025 to authorize the Director of the Finance and Management Department on behalf of the Department of Public Service, Division of Infrastructure Management, to establish a purchase order with Southeastern Equipment Company Incorporated utilizing an Ohio Department of Transportation contract to acquire four Cronkite 3612 tow-behind utility trailers to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code Chapter 329 to authorize the expenditure of $66,828 from the Department of Public Service from the Municipal Motor Vehicle Tax Fund and to declare an emergency. These four tow-trailers are one-for-one replacements of existing trailers that have reached their end of life. They'll be using for hauling snow, ice, mowing equipment to various locations to serve all of our city streets. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, Deau Cower, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Lastly, we have ordinance 1086-2025 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders and contracts with multiple vendors for the purchase of various pavement materials and aggregates for the Department of Public Service to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to utilize State of Ohio and Ohio Department of Transportation contracts to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements and State of Ohio and Ohio Department of Transportation contracts for pavement materials and aggregates to authorize the expenditure of up to $450,000 from the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund to authorize the expenditure of up to $650,000 from the Municipal Motor Vehicle Tax Fund and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service ensures the safety of our roadways and alleyways. These materials are used to repair and maintain city roadways by filling potholes and other various roadway repairs. The alley rehabilitation or alley treatment program focuses on the improvements of alleys that have an existing chip-sealed surface. This ordinance establishes universal term contracts that have been or will be completed for these commodities. Additionally, one-time bids and ODOT contracts can also be utilized for the purchase of these commodities as necessary. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, Deau Cower, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have on my committees this evening, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services and Equity Committee chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Council President. Tonight in our Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have two ordinances on second reading. The first one is ordinance 1008-2025 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to modify an existing contract with Laboratory Corporation of America Holdings for increased laboratory testing services for the Sexual Health and Wellness Center for the period of March 1st, 2025 to March 31st, 2026 to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, authorize the expenditure not to exceed $25,000 from the Health Department Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. This contract serves the Sexual Health and Wellness Center at Columbus Public Health. For 2024, LabCorp has completed 3,722 tests, which is an average of about 335 tests per month. This contract provides diagnosis and management of gynecological and urological concerns, sexually transmitted infections, testing and treatment, HIV prep, annual pap smears, and HPV testing. Emergency action is being requested to avoid a disruption in services to patients. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, Deau Cower, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you so much. As I introduce this next ordinance, I'd love to invite Erin Upchurch, Executive Director of Kaleidoscope Youth Center, to the podium. Our second ordinance tonight is ordinance 1122-2025 to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with Kaleidoscope Youth Center, Inc., in support of its general operations and capacity building to authorize an appropriation of $65,000 within the Neighborhood Initiative Sub-Fund to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 within the Neighborhoods Initiative Sub-Fund and to declare an emergency. The Kaleidoscope Youth Center, or KYC, is the largest and longest-standing organization in the state of Ohio that is dedicated to centering the needs and experiences of our LGBTQIA+ young people. This funding will help support, will help fund supportive programming and non-clinical resources to our LGBTQIA+ youth and young adults, allies, families, and providers chiefly work that's happening through their KYC's drop-in center. In the past six years, KYC has connected young people through approximately, connected with young people through approximately 25,000 visits at the drop-in center. They have, drop-in centers like KYC's have a well-documented history of increasing protective factors for youth and providing safer physical spaces to access, support, engage with mentors, and develop positive youth development skills. And we know that belonging builds resilience. These centers create a sense of community and connection that can protect against oppression, isolation, and suicidality, which our LGBT youth face at significantly higher rates than their peers. And at a time when state and federal policy is actively undermining the very existence of our LGBTQIA+ friends, neighbors, and loved ones, I firmly believe that when state and federal policy fails, our cities must lead. This action today is more than just an appropriation, it's a commitment, a commitment to put our values into action, protecting our young people's rights, dignity, and future. We cannot claim to be a city for all if we abandon some. Every young person in Columbus deserves to know that they are seen, valued, and supported. And at a time of division and fear, places like Kaleidoscope offer a different path, one that's rooted in compassion, understanding, and a belief that everyone belongs. For LGBTQIA+ youth who may not feel safe or affirmed at home or in school, these third spaces provide critical refuge, a place where they can simply be themselves without fear. Now, more than ever, drop-in centers like KYC matters, and safe spaces like yours save lives. And so, at this point in time, I would love to turn it over to Erin to say a few words about the work that they're doing at KYC and the impact it's having.
Thank you. Kind of stole my thunder there about the org, but that's all right. You've covered it all. No, thank you very much, Council President Harden, President Pro Tim Dorance, and council at large. Thank you so much for this opportunity. You all are longtime friends of Kaleidoscope Youth Center, and for that, we are extremely grateful. It is comforting to know that we have a group of leaders in the city who have our back. And as you mentioned, with the federal and state attacks, I can say in the 30, I guess almost 31 years that we've been in existence, our young people have never been attacked so egregiously and so directly and so, in such an unkind way. And, you know, one of the things we like to say is, you know, it takes the village. There are so many ways that we can take a stand and stand with and for our young people. And, you know, nonprofits are always wanting money. We're always asking for money. We need money to run. We need to do our programs. And one thing that I'm proud about is that all of our services are offered at no cost to our youth and their families. But we know what an investment looks like, right? Just like when somebody gets proposed, you do this beautiful ring. It's an investment. And with our young folks, and they see that our leaders, our local leaders are investing in what they're doing, who they are, investing in their future and their sustainability, that means something too. And so, I thank you all for stepping up and investing in this way and showing our young folks that you care in this way. And to Council President Harden, President Pro Tim. And to Council President Harden, President Protim Dorrance, Councilmember White, in my head, I have it's a White, White, White. Can I say Whitey though? I don't, because in my mind, it works. No, kidding. Names are very important. We do not want to mess up people's names. And Councilmember Green, my fellow social worker, thank you, thank you, thank you. I remember when I first went to school to be a social worker, they said that we find a need and fill it. And I, over 20 years, I've always held on to that. And so I want to thank you for your leadership as a council member, as a social worker, and advocating and standing up for us and using your voice in this way. And again, thank you, all of you, for your ongoing support, care, and love.
Thank you so much for being here, and it's an honor to be able to support your work and your mission. I would love to open up the floor to turn it over to anyone else who would like to say a few words. And specifically, again, also would again like to thank Council President Harden, Council President Protim Dorrance, and Councilmember White for also helping and contribute to this funding award.
Councilmember, I just wanted to say, I mean, you said it all, but I just want to reinforce, I think now more than ever, we don't listen to our young people enough. And we give them a platform where they can be their most authentic selves in a place where they feel safe being their most authentic selves. We pick and we choose when we want to elevate young people. I'll never forget going up in a refueling mission when I was chairing Veteran Affairs and the young person who was literally laying down on this refueling aircraft, who in the middle of the air, in darkness, will refuel a plane in, you know, this could be happening in times of peace, this could be happening in times of conflict, was 18 years old. And we trust that young person to know who they are. We trust that young person with the safety of our nation, but we can't trust young people to identify who they are or for them to stand up for their own identities and for them to hold space for who they are. It is important for us to create spaces and for us to advocate for spaces like Kaleidoscope, that we are empowering them and that we are believing them and that we are giving them the opportunity to explore, the opportunity to be safe in who they are, the opportunity to express that. And it quite literally does save lives, especially at that time when we see, you know, the highest suicide rate among young men is between 17 to 25 years old. And so we could go on with the statistics, but I think the point has been made. And I just want to say thank you. Thank you for holding firm. Thank you for creating space. Thank you for giving our young person, young people voice and for elevating them in ways that they couldn't have even imagined themselves, even when they don't always feel safe in their regular lives. They know there's a place that they can go and be their truest selves. So thank you for that work.
Thank you. Well, thank you for being here tonight. Seeing no further comments or questions, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhaur, Dorrance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all from me, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you very much, Council President. Tonight I have two ordinances in public safety and criminal justice, the first being 1019 2025 to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer $2,515,613 within various projects of the Safety Voted Bond Fund to amend the 2024 capital improvement budget to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into contracts with an issue, purchase orders to the Sutphen Corporation for the purchase of one Sutphen heavy-duty 100-foot mid-mount aerial ladder and related equipment to authorize the expenditure of $2,515,613 from the Safety Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director Key, speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please.
Councilmember Remy, yes. This purchase is being made in accordance with the state term schedule, which requires us to include a bid waiver in the legislation. But I did want to note that on top of that, we requested and received quotes from three vendors, just to make sure that the process was as competitive as possible. The two other vendors were not responsive to our specifications, and Sutphen was responsive and therefore the lowest bid.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. We do have one speaker on this piece of legislation this evening, Mr. Mark Vandak. Welcome to council, Mr. Vandak. You have three minutes. I'll give you the moment to walk up here. Please state your name and any organization that you represent.
Well, thank you, President Harden and members of city council. I am the president of local Teamsters Local 284. On behalf of 3,500 members of our local union, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. The city council has been a strong voice for for supporting workers in their in their communities and their unions in the past. Many of you've walked picket lines with organized labor. The council has passed legislation to protect workers from wage theft, and you've supported community benefit agreements on public construction projects. Tonight, I'm here to urge you to vote no on the contract to purchase the fire apparatus from Sutphen Corporation. Through its unlawful conduct and mistreatment of workers, it suffices, it suffices violating the public's trust. The company cannot promise the city uninterrupted production or on-time delivery of of the fire apparatus in question. Instead, Sutphen has become a poster child for corporate greed and disregarding our nation's labor laws. I say this because Sutphen has committed numerous serious violations of federal law and launched an assault on workers and their families. The violations of the federal law are so extreme that Sutphen was recently required to read out loud with an NLRB approved notice to the workforce in the presence of an NLRB attorney at its Dublin's facility. The notice required Sutphen to pledge it would stop threatening, retaliating against workers who engaged in union activities, stopped engaging in bad faith bargaining, to avoid a labor contract, and stopped refusing to schedule negotiations. Even after the NLRB approved a settlement agreement, the owners of Sutphen continue to refuse to even schedule a contract negotiation, let alone enter into a fair collective bargaining agreement, guaranteed labor, peace, and fair treatment of our workers. Last week, Local 284 notified the NLRB that Sutphen had fails has failed to comply with the terms of the settlement agreement, which could result in the NLRB rescinding the settlement agreement and a federal trial and unfair labor practice strike could happen, which would stop production and delivery of apparatus you are considering tonight. Sutphen has refused to negotiate over a new contract since October of 2024. What they've been doing since that, what have they been doing since that time, they've been paying a union buster whose website says he focuses on, quote, shielding companies from unions, OSHA, and employees, end quote. What type of company needs to be shielded from unions, the Occupational Safety Board, and Health Administration, if even their own employees? Apparently, Sutphen does. Sutphen has exploited its workforce, denied them a wage increase since October of 2023. The company's last contract proposals threatened to take away our union health insurance. Yeah, exception. I thank you. The company's last proposal would have required Local 284 to agree not to attempt to unionize any of its other employees. This not is not the Sutphen Corporation in the past. Sutphen employees at Dublin's facility are currently working without a contract and have a right to strike anytime. If Sutphen transfers struck work to its other facilities, unions extend the strike to Sutphen's other facilities, it's to maximize the extent permitted by law. Until there's a new contract, labor contract in place for workers in Dublin, every government contract with Sutphen's and every purchase order is at risk. Local 284 recognizes the difficult position Sutphen has put this council in, our city, firefighters, and residents. Everyone deserves better from a company that has profited greatly from the public treasury. The workers at Sutphen Dublin hopes the company takes steps to restore the public trust and once again earns the privilege of contracting with the city of Columbus and other cities around the country. Sutphen is currently doing exactly the opposite. Therefore, Local 284 and the workers in Dublin are asking council to vote no on this contract until at a minimum, the company returns to negotiating table and bargains in good faith. I thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vandak. We appreciate your continued advocacy for your workers and certainly this is a tough one. Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Chair, Remy, can I ask a question?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, was there questions?
Yeah. President Vandak, thank you for being here tonight. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions to sort of drill down to some of your comments. So, one, when you talk about sort of disruptions and sort of the situation that are there, sort of put it in plain language based upon sort of the issues that have gone on well over a year out there. And I know certainly this is a decision for those members to make, but those are the kind of conditions which would give rise to a labor dispute, which may result in a strike. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I mean, I think I've been trying to direct the workforce to be patient, but I think their patience is probably over with. And yes, that would definitely direct a strike.
And if those workers went on strike, then obviously the purchase of equipment from a company who's, you know, the people that do that work to build those things, if they're on strike and not going to work every day, that would likely disrupt the ability for the city to, you know, receive that type of product on the type of timeline that we would expect. Is that fair?
Yes, that'd be a fair statement.
And just to, again, drill down to this a little bit more. So the National Labor Relations Board issued a settlement, and one of those parts of the settlement was to say, hey, guys, basically get back to the table and negotiate, which is the standard thing that companies do, employers do with with their labor representatives. And since that settlement agreement has come into place, that has not occurred, right? There's been no communication between you all and the company about establishing, here's the date and time that we're going to get together and figure this out and make sure that, again, both the workers and the company have the ability to have a fair contract. Has that happened?
No. I, the, actually, on April 24th, after the settlement agreement was signed by both parties and in mid-April, April 24th, I sent a letter to officers of the company and the and the plant manager saying, I wonder when would you like to, you have dates available in May? No response. They actually read the notice of violation to the to their employees on May 1st. I went to that meeting, asked the same question then, still no response, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Deakah.
Could you repeat what you previously said about when they last, the workers last received a raise, the status on their benefits? It sounded like you said that they were, the company was not being amenable on their benefits.
Well, we're working without a contract. You know, that would that would keep certain benefits in place, like healthcare, et cetera. Probably day-to-day operations, you wouldn't think that there was anything different, but there is, you know, would would curtail like arbitration, that type of thing. The last raise these employees had was in October of 23. They have an annual contract renewal. And, you know, obviously, that's when their their raise has come into play. They, the company walked out of negotiations on the eve of the negotiations on the October 24th expiration date. And obviously, we've been at odds since.
All right. Thank you very much. I do understand there is.
I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Vandak. Appreciate it. I do understand there's someone in the audience from Sutphen and would invite them up to answer to these questions.
Good evening. I apologize for not being fully equipped and prepared for speaking this evening. I was coming down expecting just to watch and kind of take in everything going on, but I'm happy to speak. My name is Josh Plickta. I work at Sutphen Corporation. I've been there for almost seven years now. So Sutphen Corporation, for those who might not know, family-owned and operated business, has been in Columbus and been around since 1890. 135-year-old family-owned business, like I said. We're currently on the fifth generation of leadership owned by, run by Shelby Sutphen Chambers, who is our fifth-generation family president, and then also by our fourth-generation family president, Julie Sutphen Phelps. Many of you might know Drew Sutphen. He's recently stepped back and is now taking on a chairman of the board position and is currently has recently retired. So we're excited to bring on that fifth generation. Regarding Columbus as a whole and how we interact with the community and we interact with our dealerships, so Heritage Fire Equipment is our current dealer here in Columbus, Ohio. They actually built a, or excuse me, have a brand-new facility in the greater Columbus area that's only a mile away from our Fleet Services facility here in Columbus. We did that on purpose to best serve the city of Columbus. We're located here in Columbus, in Dublin, members of the Chamber of Commerce. We are very much integrated and ingrained in the community as a business. As it stands for our labor relations, we are currently back, as Mark mentioned, we are currently in those stage of volleying back and forth times. As Mark mentioned, we did read out all the information about the NLRB. So we're very much going through all the processes. As many people know, the NLRB went through a lot of different processes of the change of administration at the federal level. So there was a lot of, there were a lot of delays, a lot of foot dragging, things along those lines. So that's really put us in a corner as well regarding the NLRB. In addition, we've never missed a paycheck. People haven't been out of work. There's never been a, we haven't laid off because of this. As Mark also said, there haven't been any healthcare delays. People have had healthcare. So things along those lines. While we understand that it might not be the best relationship, we do, we're doing what we can to put forth. 135 years old, we are a steady company. We take things steady Eddie. We don't rush to decisions. We don't do things. We understand the value that our team members bring, myself included. I'm not a Sutphen family member, but they treat our employees like Sutphen family members. So I really value the way that they treat their employees and see them put their employees first and take those steady decisions to make sure that the their family business is around for the next 135 years and the next 135 years. Fun fact, the very first building was at, or the very first Sutphen office was in Little Vic Tower. The second one was down in Grandview. Now we're out in Dublin. So we're very much ingrained in the community, and I think that that is something that we should all really be, really embrace here as a community-oriented group and then also with our fire services. So thank you. I'll take any questions, I guess, and answer the best that I can.
So I'm just baffled by the fact that it's 17 days later and there's not been one response from the company to the Teamsters. It's baffling.
So I will say.
It's a phone call, it's an email, it's a conversation that the National Labor Relations Board ordered you to do. So I'm curious what the reasoning is behind this.
So again, I can't speak necessarily to that. I don't want to act like I can. I'm not the best person. Wasn't exactly expected to speak here tonight, as full transparency. That being said, we're in front of our team members every single month. We have town halls every single month. They aren't where they're muted. They aren't an online system. We don't have where, oh, nobody can ask a question. Every single month, our leadership gets in front of their team members from across all of our facilities and says, hey, guys, this is what's going on. This is where we are. Are there any rumors that we can talk about? Are there any questions that anybody has? And as Mark said too, that we're actually, you know, there was conversation had just last week where there was conversation. NLRB things were written or were said. And so things along those lines that I can't speak to why or really many more details, but that's kind of the general perspective.
Councilmember White.
Can you commit today to going back to your leadership and having them respond to that question? I mean, it should be a no-brainer for them to send a note to all of council saying, we're committed to getting back to the table to negotiate an agreement that supports workers.
Again, everything that I've been told, everything that I've known, is that we are in the process of committing to working. We're going back and forth. We are discussing. With those various NLRB suits that were lobbied against us, we had to, again, protect ourselves. We had to say, hey, what is going on? We can't go and negotiate in the middle of a lawsuit.
So is there the hope that there's going to be a wholesale change at the NLRB? That way you guys can get a deal that's better, more in your favor?
No, I think that from that perspective, it's somewhat, again, caveats. I don't mean to be that way. However, from my understanding, that we're kind of past some of that now, that those have been resolved, that that's what was spoken about at the last meeting where those NLRB, you know, violations were read. And so that's where the communication comes in, and that's where that communication has been transparent with our team members and with leadership.
Chair.
Council Protim Dorrance.
So thanks for being here. And again, you know, I think everyone is proud to have something in this community, right? It's a rare thing to have, literally a company down the street that you can purchase something as vital as fire apparatuses that are needed to keep our community safe, particularly also something, a company that is unionized. So we've got local workers, you know, historically, you know, being represented by union, doing this important work. So I think we all historically have really liked doing business together. I think to Chair Remy's points, when you talk about that engagement, that's not the, that is not the company getting together and started restarting this conversation. That was ordered by the National Labor Relations Board to read off a notice. That was ordered by the National Labor Relations Board to read off a notice in which the company was accused of surface-level negotiations, not bargaining in good faith. So, you can talk about getting back together and having a conversation with folks. That was found not to be having happened for a significant amount of time. And then, we're here close to three weeks later, and to Chair Remy's point, not an email, not a phone call about, hey, let's sit back down at the table and negotiate over this. So, when I ask, you know, the president of the local there about, hey, what could happen next? I hear disruption after strike, this, that, and the other thing. That makes me very concerned about it being the steward of the taxpayer's dollars here, about spending $2 million on something that, again, I think we all need and want to buy. But I've got real concerns about whether or not the company can actually deliver on that in the moment, considering all these things that are hanging over this, in addition to having, again, the NLRB actually acknowledged that there's been some serious, serious issues here with these negotiations or frankly lack thereof. So, I understand you're not authorized to say, hey, next week we're going to sit down with them. I get you're here tonight and we're not expecting to discuss this, and I get that. But frankly, until someone in leadership of that company calls that man back there and says, hey, we're going to schedule dates on these dates and times to actually sit down and negotiate this, I can't be in support of this legislation. I just can't because everything is hanging over it, and I can't support that.
So, I guess if I may comment, I think, you know, some of that, again, as you said, can't necessarily, but from that, we're taking a lot into our council as well that we have been advised to take. Our lawyer, as Mark mentioned, I'm our attorney that we're being guided by, is actually the recommended attorney by the Ohio Manufacturers Association. So, by the OMA is the guy, is the full recommendation that we have for our lawyer. So, we've taken a lot of his counsel and his consideration, and that's kind of where we are with that. And again, I will take what I can back to our leadership and our group. My understanding is that's what those meetings are every month that we have, and that we're able to say, hey, this is where we are transparently. And we said, well, Mark said he was there, and we're getting in front of everybody and saying, hey, this is where we are to go and...
And if I could tell you, it strikes a little hollow when that same attorney on their website says, part of what they do is unit avoidance. That does not necessarily say that they're looking to sit down at the table and have a real discussion about how do you make sure that both a collective bargaining service both the company and the workers?
Right.
So, I understand you're not him. I'm just telling you that is what this man holds himself out to be.
You know, one way or the other, yeah. And that's the recommendation that we receive from the Ohio Manufacturers Association.
Yeah, that's probably not a good recommendation. Counsel president.
We're a manufacturer in Ohio.
Thank you. Sir, remind me your name.
Josh Plickta.
Josh.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, Counsel member White asked for you to take back a request that you reach out to the folks that are in the back of the room today. I actually don't think that is too much for you to commit to today, to take that advocacy back. Mark is right. This is the most pro-labor council in our city's history. And I think that where I come down on this is not just as a council member, but as a relative of three folks who serve in our fire department. Our top priority is to make sure that our firefighters and thus our residents have the best equipment on time to do the job that they have to do. I go to every fire graduation, and what I always say is that I will fight to make sure that my family gets home safely and that the families of the other firefighters get home safely as well. Me supporting this legislation does not mean that I have any disagreement at all in terms of the values or the argument that Press Pro Tem is making. I spoke to Shelby last week. I said these same things to her, that this is our expectation. These are the values of council, how we treat our employees matter, and that we do expect for you to get back to the table. So, I reiterate, I am asking you again for, so I can take this vote, that you go back and ask and advise that there is an outreach to the folks that are in the back. That is important, I think, to this council. Like I said, it is also important, as it is our top priority as elected officials, to make sure that we equip our firefighters. As I heard from the safety department, they went out for other bids. Other folks did not come in or choose to bid. That actually makes this part of the decision simpler for me, that I need to do something. I need to support this so that our firefighters have what they need. But that means, that takes away not one bit, the values, the sentiments that you just heard from Press Pro Tem, or the expectation that this body has that you work with organized labor and support your employees.
Yeah, I'm definitely happy to take it all back to Shelby, to Julie, to the entire Sutphen family and the entire Sutphen leadership team, certainly. I have, I have my confidence in their ability to go and take my word, to go and move forward with...
And this is, thank you. And this is the last thing I will say, though. And this is where I would say to my members, this is not the last fire truck that we have to buy. And so, they will be back in front of us, and we, this is not the last time we will have to have to have this conversation. And so, those expectations stand. So, thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Do you want to speak?
I have a question, sir. How long does it take to fulfill the order?
So, it depends on the type of truck and...
Well, wait, hold on, I'm sorry. I thought we know the type of truck or type of equipment. This is...
What truck? You know, what do you know?
Yeah, so, I don't even have the documentation in front of me. We hold slots for the city of Columbus. We are always very preferential to the city of Columbus and do our best to cater to the needs of our hometown, of a company or of a department that we've worked with for decades, if not over a century. So, again, what we have in front of us, I can't speak to it because I believe that it might be 14 to 16 months. Is it 14 to 16 months? For this specific truck, our SPH 100, which is our flagship product for the city of Columbus specifically. It can vary depending on the customization of the truck, things along those lines. But for the city of Columbus, we are extremely preferential, to be completely honest, for our hometown.
Counsel member Barosa, De Padilla.
I just, I just wanted to say, I think it was a sore miscalculation to send someone who wasn't prepared to answer questions before this body tonight. I'm sure you're feeling that right now. You are a lovely human being, but I'm just going to say, if you want to take something back, that is one thing I would take back. Second of all, you keep saying hometown. Dublin is not Columbus. Columbus is not Dublin, just so that we are clear. I appreciate that you are local and you are close in proximity, but just so that we get the terminology correct, because I think what is disappointing to me, and by no means do we want to pit, these are, these are both unions that we care about, and we don't want to put them against each other. We want to invest and make sure our firefighters have what they need, but I will say, it is concerning to me that you can't say your values base but then not be worker-based because your value is in your workers. And so, if you were not coming to the table and investing in them, then what you're saying falls flat to me. It feels disingenuous. So, I would just say, as we continue these negotiations that, and continue these conversations, that I think it's also respecting also this body, because I think the concerns, you know, oftentimes there are nine people in this body, and while we are led by council president, there are still nine votes that folks need to have. And so, I think without engagement and understanding, then what we have to go on is the actions of the company. And right now, the actions of the company, I think for me, are super concerning. And so, it, you're saying one thing, you're showing up another way, and so I would just also be sure to take that back because I think that that matters.
We would love to have you out to the facility anytime.
Thank you, council member, and I concur. I mean, these conversations, and thank you for coming. You're welcome to take your seat now. These conversations have been ongoing. We've had many conversations with the leadership at Sutphen, and a lot of shallow promises to us, that they were working closely with our friends, our partners, the Teamsters. And it is very disconcerting to have a company that has been a longstanding partner of this city treat our friends and family in a way that they're doing currently. However, unfortunately, we are in a position where we need equipment desperately. And as the deputy director, you know, talked about, you know, it's not like people are lining up to build ladder trucks for us. And so, it is my hope and expectation that they work, they get back to the unions. This week, they set up negotiations and work out a fair contract for the men and women who helped build Sutphen all these years. Nothing less is unacceptable. And this is what the council president said. This is far from the last fire truck that we'll be purchasing with this council. So, let it be clear that you're on notice, that we have high expectations from this council to work with our union brothers and sisters, and we expect it to be done by Sutphen Corporation now. For that reason, I'm going to support this legislation.
Is there a second?
No, I haven't moved. Is there any other discussion this evening? I would like to first move to amend the 30-day by voice.
Second. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Beatty...
By voice.
I'm sorry.
Apologies.
It's good. Bangston?
Yes.
Barosa, De Padilla?
No.
Beatty?
No.
De Akauer?
No.
Dorans?
No.
Green?
No.
Remy?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes.
With that, I would like to refer back to committee. I move to refer back to committee.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorans, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Refer back to committee.
Next, I have ordinance 1108, 2025, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate purchase agreements for the purchase of uniforms and accessories for the Division of Police from existing universal term contracts, to authorize the expenditure of $3,367,868 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. The Division of Police needs to procure uniforms, footwear, leather goods, uniform accessories, and protective wear for police officers, recruits, and some civilian employees. This ordinance will enable the Division to purchase these uniforms and accessories from Galls LLC, Highcom Armor Solutions, Vance Outdoors, WW Granger Lawman's and Shooter Supply, and GenCo Safety Supply in accordance with the universal term contracts established for this purpose by the purchasing office. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorans, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much, Council President. That is all I have in public safety and criminal justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee. Next committee to come for council is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, chaired by Council member White. Council member, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, my committee, I only have one piece of legislation, but I'm going to yield the floor to my vice chair, Council member Remy, to present this ordinance.
Thank you very much, Chair White. Tonight, I have ordinance 1101, or excuse me, 1011, 2025, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into contract with utility service partners, private label DBA HomeServe, to allow Home Serve to market water and sewer line protection plans to customers served by the City of Columbus Department of Public Utilities and to declare an emergency. I'm going to turn it over to the deputy director to give us a little bit more context about this piece of legislation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Remy, President Harden, members of council. Yes, we are requesting emergency because the city is under a federal mandate to replace leadlines by 2037. This, sooner the contract is implemented, the sooner DPU customers in the city can save on repair and replacing service lines when they break. So, this is a five-year contract with Home Serve to offer water and sewer infrastructure protection program to our customers. The program is voluntary, and there is no cost to the city. Customers that sign up will pay between $4.99 and $1,249 per month, depending on their plan. The program will cover service line or plumbing breaks. Customers can call Home Serve 24 hours a day. They will send local licensed plumber to handle the repair. If the service line is determined to be lead or galvanized, Home Serve will replace the whole line. Home Serve will also has a care program fund where a portion of customer payments will be set aside to assist low-income customers replace lead or galvanized service lines. We feel this, this program is important because lead service lines and galvanized lines can no longer be repaired. So, if you have a break, you will need to replace the entire line until we get to you to do that replacement as part of our 10-year program. So, it's really trying to protect those homeowners during that period of time when we get to them to replace the line. If they have a break, they would have to repair the whole line. I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that context. I think it's very important, as a Realtor, we talk about this all the time, that gap between your house and the service, the water outside. And if I, my lawn, I got longways. It can cost thousands and thousands, if not tens of thousands of dollars to do so. And so, this little bit of protection is something that, you know, I advise anybody, especially in a neighborhood that, you know, is approaching, you know, 30, 40, 50 years old, where those lines have been sitting there for so long that, you know, it could occur, and that you hear the horror stories out there of individuals that didn't have any type of insurance, and now they're struggling to come up and pay for a $10,000 bill just so they can have water. So, it's incredibly important. Appreciate the department signing this agreement, and certainly, hopefully, people will take advantage of it as well. Are there... Chair White?
No question for me, but, yeah.
Any other? Okay. All right. Okay, seeing no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa, De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorans, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all we have for the committee this evening.
Thank you, Chair. The first piece of, the last committee to come for council is the Housing, Homelessness and Building Committee. I chair that committee. The first piece of legislation that we have tonight is ordinance 1062-2025, is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contract into two separate grant agreements with legal aid of southeast and central Ohio in the total amount of $1.475 million to enable the legal aid of southeast and central Ohio to be designated organization as defined in the Columbus City Codes and to make available free, full legal representation to unrepresented tenants facing eviction from their homes at Franklin County Municipal Court with an option to modify and renew for one additional year. To authorize the advancement of funds on a predetermined schedule, to authorize reimbursement of expenses incurred prior to execution of the purchase order, and to authorize the transfer in expenditure of $975,000 from the general fund, and to authorize expenditure of $500,000 from ERA 2. This $1.475 million investment in the tenant advocacy project will provide critical legal representation to families with children who are facing eviction and living below the poverty line. With more than 25,000 evictions filings in Franklin County last year, a record high, this legislation is an invaluable investment to prevent homelessness and displacement, especially for our most vulnerable residents. The City Council Commission Stout Report shows that for every $1 invested in legal council for tenants, our community receives at least $4 in economic savings. That means reduced strain on our shelters and emergency systems, better health outcomes, and greater employment stability. Supporting this legislation is not only smart, it is fiscally responsible. Evictions disproportionately impact women and families with children, so by institutionalizing the tenant advocacy program, Columbus is taking a long-term and equitable approach to tackling homelessness. This legislation builds on our previous commitment and ensures lasting access to legal protections to help keep families housed. I want to go ahead and turn the call-up Kate McGarvey and Joe Shu-Sushumi from Sushima from Legal Aid to provide additional remarks. Welcome back to council.
President Harden, Pro Temp Dorans, members of council, thank you for having us today. I don't think I really need to do anything to try to persuade council that this is a good investment. It's clear that council and the mayor's office have recognized... It's clear that council and the mayor's office have recognized that this is a commitment that really needs to be made to ensure that tenants have a voice at eviction court, and especially when it's such a critical time in their lives, a lot of our clients are just facing unforcing hardships, and they just need that extra hand to make sure that they can maintain their housing or get enough time to relocate. I think most critically today, I just wanted to assure that Legal Aid is going to be here to continue providing our services, and we've been there since twenty seventeen. And it started off with just me and a folding table out in eviction court, and we've just been grinding since. And I think because of the city's support to continue these efforts and grow our program, we've been able to make a significant improvement to the expectations for our clients at eviction court. So we continue, we thank you for your continued support, and we look forward to this partnership as we move forward.
Yeah, and I would just echo Joe Shu's thank you for your commitment and longstanding commitment to tenants in the City of Columbus. We know how much evictions have grown. I think just April numbers were the highest April that we have had, and so this program remains so, so important. From the stout study, we know that providing those resources and eviction representation saves not just the tenants in terms of their housing, their stability, their ability to have a soft landing if they're not able to stay housed, but also the community dollars on the back end. And as we see homelessness numbers rise, putting these additional dollars upfront is so, so important. So we just really appreciate your commitment to this project going forward.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Yes, I would like to make a comment to educate the citizens and also others. We think about the right to counsel in the sense of the criminal realm because it is constitutionally mandated. But in the civil realm, I will tell you, and I'm sure that you're aware of this, there's a gap in the marketplace that private lawyers do not want to represent tenants in these type of cases because there is not sufficient funds usually to pay private attorneys. I had the opportunity in my business life on the call center, which had contracts with the Columbus Bar Association, Cincinnati Bar Association, and Cleveland Bar Association, answering lawyer referral calls. In landlord tenant cases, representing the tenants was one of the top three reasons for calls into these lawyer referral lines. But the number of private attorneys that we would have that were on the panel to take these referrals was not sufficient. So what you're doing is extremely important, even to those that could afford an attorney. There is not a sufficient number of private attorneys even engaging in this area of law. So this is more than just, this is also access to counsel as well.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make that comment.
No, absolutely. I appreciate that. I think a lot of people do misunderstand what you're entitled to, and I think the criminal right, people don't understand on the civil side that you can lose your house, you can lose your kids, you can lose a whole lot of things without access to counsel. And we know that many people can't afford counsel, and so oftentimes, legal aid is the only option, and we do our best, but there is a huge gap. And so we certainly appreciate that. We do try to use pro bono attorneys and have them built into our program, and so as much as possible, we try to bring in that outside help and support them. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Passed. Next up, we have ordinance zero seven two six dash twenty twenty five. This ordinance authorizes appropriation in the amount of one point one seven three million dol, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. The transfer between object classes in the amount of one million, or one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirteen cents, and the expenditure of funds in the amount of one million, five hundred thousand dollars of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two home investment partnership program and home investment partnership ARP program funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It authorizes the Director of the Department of Development to enter into separate commitment letters, loan agreements, promissory notes, mortgages, and restrictive covenants with Nelson Park Reservation Preservation Association in the amount up to one million, five hundred thousand dollars for the Nelson Park project based on their funding sources and authorizes an emergency. So this ordinance is part of a larger legislative package that we'll be passing next week. So we'll hold off on more detail, but this specific ordinance authorizes up to one point five million dollars for home RP grants in the Nelson Park project. And I apologize, I read the ordinance number wrong. It's ordinance one one five six dash twenty twenty five. Are there no questions or comments? I move for passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Passed. Seeing no further business come for councils, their motion to adjourn. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Passed. We have two non-agenda speakers. Uh, number twenty-four. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
We are reconvened. We are actually now going to, I have, can I ask for a motion to recess so we can go to zoning? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Now, may I have a motion to convene meeting number twenty-five? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to sense with the reading of the journal?
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
We are now in our zoning committee. Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing no addition or correction, we will, the journal is approved. We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Dorns chairs that committee. All members, sorry, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, first, a little bit of housekeeping. Would the clerk please read the numbers of legislation in this committee that require waiver of second reading?
Ordinance eleven sixty-two, eleven sixty-four, eleven sixty-five, eleven sixty-six, eleven sixty-seven, eleven eighty, and eleven eighty-five dash twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, clerk. I now move to waive second reading on those items.
Second.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. As always, before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, I'll only briefly expand our current rules. Perpetual speaker counts on recent zones and variances. We only hear staff presentation for ordinance that have a disapproval from recommending body, or if you have a public speaker signed up to speak against an ordinance. We permit up to three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask that those speakers limit their remarks to three minutes per the standard rules of City Council. All speakers in the council variance, including the city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of the area commission always have a speaking on an ordinance, you do not need a fellow speaker slip, but we do ask you, alert city staff of your intentions to speak at this committee. This evening, we did receive one public speaker slip, but due to that ordinance being postponed later on our agenda, the speaker has rescinded their request to speak. I invite the city attorney's office, so will now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, not be the truth that you usually answer under pains and penalty of perjury, so please say I do? Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Robert Eastman Johnson for the Department of Building and Services has been sworn in. First, we have ordinance one one six two dash twenty twenty-five to grant a variance provisions of section three three five five point oh three C three permitted use of three three five six point one one B, C four district setback lines, three three one two point two five maneuvering, three three eight nine point one two portable building. The Columbus City Codes are properly located at three four, three nine Parsons Avenue to allow automotive maintenance and sales, tire sales, and food truck with reduced development standards in the C three commercial district. This site consists of an existing automotive maintenance and sales facility with, which is subject to zoning code violation for failure to obtain zoning clearance of the expansion of the facility. A council variance is required because the current zoning district does not allow automotive maintenance and sales with permanent placement of a food truck on site and will assist in legitimizing this expansion. Additional variances for maneuvering out of the right-of-way and for not requiring a special permit for the board of zoning adjustments to the food truck, which is considered to be a portable building when it's not moved nightly, are included in this request. This ordinance is also conditioned on the existing traffic point to Parsons Avenue being restricted to vehicles entering the garage door facing Parsons Avenue. Proposals have approvals from the city staff and the Far South Area Commission. Council President, can I have a, can we, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for five minutes. Recessed, I'm sorry.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
We are in recess.
De Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
We're back in zoning committee.
Thank you, Council President. Apologize about that. Again, we are hearing ordinance one one six two dash twenty twenty-five to grant a variance provisions of section three three five five point oh three C four permitted uses, three three five six point one one B, C four district setback lines, and maneuvering in three three eight nine point one two portable building in Columbus City Codes to properly locate at three four, three nine Parsons Avenue to allow a automotive maintenance and sales tires, sales and food truck with reduced development standards in the C three commercial district. I explained these variances a moment ago. Any questions from council colleagues? Seeing none, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Our next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. Finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one one six four dash twenty twenty-five to grant a variance provisions of section three 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 two point zero three seven R two F residential district, three three one two point two one A landscaping, three three one two point two one D one parking lot screening, three three one two point two seven parking setback line, three three one two point four nine required parking, and three three two one point oh five B one two vision clearance, three 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 two point one eight D basic computing area, three 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 two point two one building lines, three 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 two point two five B maximum side yard required, and three three two point two six C minimum side yard permitted, and three 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 two point two seven rear yard of the Columbus City Codes to properly locate at seven oh five and a street to allow an artist studio, gallery, production establishment, and parking lot with reduced development standards in the R two residential district. This site consists of one parcel developed with a warehouse and a second parcel developed with an unimproved parking lot. The requested council variance will allow a conversion of the existing warehouse into establishment that contains an artist studio, gallery, production, and communal space. Additionally, a new fifteen space parking lot will be provided. Council variance is required because the current zoning district does not allow for the proposed artist and parking uses. Variances to the artist studio, including those for building lines, required parking, vision clearance, lot coverage, maximum and minimum side yard, rear yard, and variance to the parking line, including those for parking setback line, landscaping, and parking lot screen. Proposal has approval from city staff and the Columbus South Side Area Commission. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one one six five dash twenty twenty-five to grant a variance provisions of section three 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 two point three eight H private garages, three 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 two point two six E minimum side yard permitted, and three 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 two point three eight G private garage of the Columbus City Codes to properly locate at two, two three nine West Como to allow habitable space with detached garage with reduced development standards in the R two F residential district. Site consists of one parcel developed with a single unit dwelling and detached garage, and the requested council variance will allow the construction of a new detached garage with a habitable space located above. A council variance is required because habitable space above a garage is only allowed when connected directly to a habitable space within a dwelling. Variances for a reduced minimum side yard for detached garage and increased garage height are also included in this request. Proposal has approvals from city staff and the Clintonville Area Commission. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Our next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. Finally, move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one one six six dash twenty twenty-five to grant a variance provisions of section three 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 two point zero three five R three residential district, three three one two point four nine required parking, and three 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 two point zero five A four area district lot width requirements, three 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 two point one three R three area district requirements, and three 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 two point one nine fronting, three 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 two point two six minimum side yard permitted, three 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 two point two seven rear yard, and three 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 two point two eight side or rear yard, obstruction of the Columbus City Codes to properly locate at forty-nine East Tulane Road to allow a two-unit dwelling on one lot with reduced development standards in the R three residential district. Site consists of one parcel developed with a single unit dwelling and detached garage, and the requested council variance will allow an existing detached garage with consideration of an accessory dwelling unit. The council variance is required because the current zoning district only allows one single unit dwelling per lot. Variance to parking lot width, lot area, fronting, minimum side yard, rear yard, and side obstruction are also included in this request. Proposal has approvals from city staff and the Clintonville Area Commission. And my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Our next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance one one six seven dash twenty twenty-five to grant a variance provisions of section three three five six point oh three C four permitted uses, three three one two point four nine C required parking, and three three two one point oh one dumpster area, and three three six three point four one A storage in Columbus City Codes to properly locate at six one six Exwoodier Street to allow a temporary automobile storage with reduced development standards in the C four commercial district. At the request of the applicant, I move to postpone this ordinance to the zoning committee meeting on June second of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Postpone.
Thank you. And finally, we have ordinance one one eight zero dash twenty twenty-five to amend ordinance number zero two five seven dash twenty twenty-five passed February tenth, twenty twenty-five for a property located at four six zero zero Lake Hurst Court to repeal section one and replace it with a new section one to include a required parking variance proposed mixed use development. Ordinance number zero five two seven dash twenty twenty-five, again, passed earlier this year on February tenth, allow for a four-unit apartment building totaling six hundred and twenty-five units, fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty square feet of existing office space and existing parking garage on property located at forty-six hundred Lake Hurst Court. This ordinance amends section one of that ordinance to correct the required parking variance necessary for the project. The variance reduced parking was intended to reflect a total reduction of two hundred and thirty-three spaces. No other aspects of that prior ordinance are changing. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.[1655.15]
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And finally, we have ordinance one one eight five dash twenty twenty-five to grant a variance provisions of section three 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 two point three eight G garage height, three 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 two point three eight H private garages, and three three one two point four nine required parking in Columbus City Codes are properly located at forty, forty, four hundred and sixty South Powell Avenue to allow habitable space with a detached garage with reduced development standards in the R three residential district. Site consists of a single unit dwelling, and the requested council variance will allow habitable space with a detached garage. Council variance is required because the current zoning district does not allow habitable space for the detached garage unless connected directly to a habitable space in that dwelling. Variance to garage height and reduced number of required parking spots from two to one are also included in this request. Proposal approved from city staff and the Greater Hilltop Area Commission. I first move to accept the staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty, De Akauer, Dorns, Green, Remi, Weich, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, we move to adopt the finance staff is the finance of council.
Clerk, please call the row.